Oh. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I hope you had a great day and thanks for joining us tonight. We'll be talking about our OVA Athlete Insights program tonight. So if you're here, you probably have a little idea already of what we're talking about, but if not, that's all good. We'll hopefully give you a good, a good idea of what that is and how you can be part of it. So I just want to start with a quick reminder actually of the mission that we have with our athlete development programs with Team Ontario. Just gonna share my screen here. And we're just gonna look at our Team Ontario mission just real quick. I like to bring it back to this because our mission is to produce athletes and coaches who will represent Canada internationally. Right? When we talk about our Team Ontario programs. But there's the second part of the mission, which is to create a system of best practices for the entire OVA community. So we have, we have these amazing programs that we run and that we've been running for many, many years. And one thing that is really important to us is that we use those very special programs to help the rest of the community, those athletes and coaches who do not necessarily get a chance to participate in these programs to also benefit from, from the things that we learned, things that we developed there. And, and the OVA Athlete Insights program was pretty much born out of this idea of giving back to the community and creating something for all athletes to be a part of so that they can improve their game. Using, like I said, some of the best practices that we're developing on Team Ontario. So we essentially reached out to a bunch of our Team Ontario coaches, worked with many, many of them. And we developed this Athletes Insights program that we're going to show you tonight. So we'll get to, uh, get to it in just one second. I just need to share a different portion of, of my screen. And there we are. So the OVA Insights program, the name was very purposeful. And as you can see on your screen right here, we say that it is an insight that it is insight that brings change, not knowledge. And, and what we mean by that is that it's not enough for me to give you information for it to mean something to you, right? I cannot take a little brain writing pen and go and, you know, write information in your brain so that you know the thing that I am just telling you. There needs to be some sort of cognitive process happening in your head where you take the information, you connect some dots, and then all of a sudden the information that you got means something to you, right? This is why, for example, you could go to a conference, you can watch a video, you can hear a presentation, and you hear a piece of information that you feel you've heard before, sometimes many times. But for some reason, that one time, there's a connection that happens in your brain and all of a sudden this makes sense to you and you actually either change behavior or change a belief or something like that, that happens, you have an insight. And so we called our program, the Athlete Insights Program, because the objective of this program is that it will create a lot of those insights for the athletes that will be part of it. So I hope that, I hope that makes sense. And I think it will as, as we go through it all and kind of show you how, how it's been, how it's been designed. Where you're looking at right now is the, the homepage of the program. So this is actually where you will go to, 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 to register for the program and I will leave that to, to Lauren to speak, uh, speak about. And by the way, I mentioned Lauren and Angie before we clicked the record button. But since we started, I did not say that I am with Lauren Brenner, our Athlete Development Lead today, and also Angie Shanar, Senior Beach Development Coach. They should be there on your screen somewhere. So say hello. Uh, so yeah, so Lauren's gonna talk a little bit about the registration process later. Yeah. So the whole purpose of this program is that we want to help athletes know themselves so that they can accelerate their growth. And like I said, right, like when we have an insight, we're making some connection between, you know, different pieces of information. And with this particular program, one thing we're really trying to do, not just about a content, but by the way the program is structured, is to help athletes gain a better understanding of what they know, what they don't know, and what they do. And then compare that to, you know, what they think they should know in order to achieve their goals. Right? So this program is really walking athletes through these, these self-awareness activities, self-evaluation activities where they really get to, get to know themselves better as athletes and therefore they're better able to plan for achieving their goals. So the program itself covers not just technical skills and tactical skills. It's important to mention. It really covers all four pillars of the Volleyball Canada Athlete Development Framework. You have them right in front of you right now. So there are various modules and we're just gonna show them to you in a second. But essentially you've got three options for the technical and tactical skill modules. You've got the beach, the beach module. You've got the indoor boys and indoor girls modules for the technical and tactical skill pillar. And then we've got our core module that includes all of the sessions and lessons on physical skills, psychological skills and the life skills. So when you look at the Athletes Development Matrix from Volleyball Canada and you see these four pillars, well, you will see those themes and that the lessons really follow all of, all of those pillars from the matrix within the Insights Program. The way that we go about covering these topics and helping athletes gain a better understanding of themselves in each of these pillars, like I said, is through very engaging activities and, and through some interactive activities. And this is really, this is really what we think is unique about this program and something that we haven't necessarily seen before. And that we're excited to bring to you and to all of our, of our athletes in Ontario is we're using a very unique approach in, in the sense that it's not just information sharing. So it, you know, this program is not meant to feel like a textbook or just this kind of video that you're watching or this lecture that you're watching. It's meant to be very engaging. It's meant to be athlete-led. It's meant for the athlete to be able to go at their own pace, explore what they want to know, go faster over certain sections where they have a good understanding, go slower over some sections that really challenge them. And they do that through some very interactive activities. Like you can see on the screen here, and I'll show you in a minute, we have interactive videos, interactive images. We have little quizzes, puzzles that the athletes can complete. We have some mix, like drag and drop activities. And we have a couple of activity, example here of the types of content that we've put in there that's meant to help the athletes learn and inquire about what they know and what they do and what they should change. So I'll just give you an example here as you can see on the screen. This is a little activity where we have to place the blockers in their initial blocking positions. And so I can grab the blockers and move them to where I think they should go. And then, yeah, and then that's the activity. That's just an example. And then for here for beach, we have this interactive image where you can click on, you know, certain those numbers and then different information will show up with some questions so that the athletes can go and, and, and really cover a specific skill. All right. So there's a lot of those activities. Those are just a couple of examples, but there's a ton of really cool stuff and really fun stuff in the program that, that we've put together for, for you guys. So actually, this would be a great time to show you what some of those lessons look like. Because again, I really want you to understand where the benefits and where I guess the value of this program really is for the athletes. My zoom window is in the way. Move this here. Okay. So this is what you should see. I've, okay, perfect. This did not work earlier when I was trying to, I'm trying to have the view that you will have when you log in, not the, not the admin view. So this is perfect here. Cause this is where you go, what you're going to see. Okay. So depending on which stream you choose, you will have either beach, girls indoors or boys indoor. And then beach and indoor for the physical, psychological and life skills lessons. This is something that everybody gets. And then you get to pick the stream that you want, or you can get beach and indoor if that's, if, if that's what you want. It's also, it's also doable. But once you're there in your modules, you just click on, on one of them and then you enter the the program. So we're in beach right now. And this is the technical and tactical skills portion of the program for beach. And as you can see here on the left side, this is everything that is available in this program. Okay. So these are all the lessons that are available. So you see all the skills. There's team defense, team offense. Okay. And finally, some scouting sessions. Okay. Uh, so obviously a lot of content there. Okay. And this is not, I'm gonna say it now, but this is not something that's meant to be completed in one sitting in just like, you know, an hour or a couple of hours. There's a lot of content there, but again, it's really something that the athletes need to, to go at their own pace for. And they want to find what, what they needed, what they want in there. Uh, so just give you a few little example of what's in here for passing. The way that this particular beach module is, is built is that for each skill here, athletes will go through a little pre-learning survey to kind of test what they already know about passing on the beach, right? So they'll start, they'll complete this little assessment. Once they're done, this, this session here is complete. And they can move on to the next one, right? And then they'll go to the technical one. And in here, there'll be question, they'll, they'll read a little bit of all the skill. Uh, and then they're asked a couple of questions here at the end, they're asked to inquire. And then this is where they can actually in their journal, write down the things that they learned through, through this lesson. And then finally, I'm not gonna go through everything. But once they've gone through the different lessons around passing on the beach, they get to a portion here, which is really, really cool. And I guess like, maybe this is where Angie, maybe you wanna step in, cause you and you, you're, you know, the beach coaches have done a really, really good job of putting these lessons together. But this one here allows the athletes to kind of experiment with some body movement. There are some questions, videos that are there to kind of explain what the activities are. And then athletes get to reflect on their movement and how that helps or hinders their ability to pass the ball. And as you can see, we have got a very, very thorough, thorough lesson here with a lot of, a lot of content, a lot of questions and a lot of activities for the athletes to do. Angie, did you want to say something about this? Cause I think it's amazing what you built with.
Sure. Yeah. I think you did a great job of expressing the intent. I mean, the intent is definitely changing it up away from just kind of creating drills, but creating body awareness, almost experiments and guiding kind of that exploration for an athlete. You know, so this first one here, initiating upper body and lower body movement and like, you know, what Brett is asking the athlete to, to test out is what that feels like when you lose your center of gravity by initiating a pass movement with your upper body or moving to a pass versus if you keep your center of gravity by initiating with your lower body. You know, and the next one might be, I think it's a strength of your lunge, cause if you're doing outside body lunge or an outside body pass, you really need to have that strength in your lunge in order to be able to pass a ball successfully. So really just trying to tie in some experiments. So to help increase the value of understanding of certain pieces, whether it's for strength conditioning in this piece or also just taking a perspective of, I mean, I, I know this is beneficial for indoor as well, but beach being a non-coaching sport, a coach doesn't coach you on court. The, the need for one to be able to air detect their own situation and, and have the body awareness to figure things out. So the, the whole module and the course is all based around this idea of supporting athletes to start really kind of inquiring and looking at the types of questions one needs to ask themselves to be able to succeed on their own and not, not need to depend on someone else. So.
Yeah. Awesome. So yeah, really exciting stuff for the athletes. And then, yeah, so again, I'm not gonna go through everything. That'd be way too long. But as you can see, this is the kind of process that each lesson kind of takes the athletes through in order for them to develop some better understanding of, like I said, what they do and then what they can potentially change in order to improve their game and achieve their goals. Right? So that's what a beach. Now, obviously, if you had access to multiple programs, you would just go back to the dashboard and then to home here. And then you could go to a different one. So just to show you a little bit of what it looks like on the indoor side. Very similar. So we've got slightly different sections, but very similar stuff. So we've got some skill execution lessons here and then a little focus on the indoor on, on the principles of play and more so kind of decision-making tactical components of the game and how it's played at a higher level. And then we've got some position-specific sessions as well. So lots of content for the athletes to, to explore. And again, if I just take, for example, foreign passing. Let's just go and look. So on the, on the indoor side for the, the skill execution piece, you know, athletes will get to watch a little video. And then they get to watch it again, actually, but this time while answering some questions. So all the little bubbles that you see here are little interventions, questions, comments that are made to help athletes actually get more out of watching the video. So they're not just passively watching it, they're answering some questions. They're reflecting on what they, what they just saw. And then they get to do a little activity here where they get to drag, you know, the answers to the right side in order to check for understanding of, you know, their understanding of what the cues and decisions are, and the ones that are involved with, with servicey. All right. And then at the end, there's always that self-reflection inquiry piece where the athletes get to reflect on what they've learned and what, what they got out of this. And this is really interesting because athletes of different levels will do this and will all get something different out of it. Right? So these sessions are actually made so that an athlete who is, you know, 15U and an athlete who's 17U, very different levels of experience can actually go in and get something out of these sessions because it's not based on, it's not based on a skill level. It's really based on the foundation of, of the sport. And, and the athletes will drive how far they take their learning, right? So for, you know, this is probably more evident when we get to like the principles of play sessions, for example. It's gone dispersion here. So the answers that an athlete gets, will, will have out of this module may actually be, you know, if we look here, there's a little activity where athletes get to, you know, draw the sets that they use with their team. So this chart will look different when a 15U athlete completes it than when a 17 or 18U athlete completes it. And so that's just like a little example of how it really doesn't matter what level you are, you will take these activities where you can and and, and it's just that more advanced athletes will have more advanced insights on what, what they need to do in order to improve their, their game. Right? So again, just showing you a little bit of how these, these modules are done. And so this is the, the platform where the program is. In here, well, these are the, the categories. Okay. So if you wanted this menu in a different way, there's also some announcements that we may have as we go. I just put one in just for tonight. So welcome to our session and I hope you're enjoying yourself. But we'll actually have some announcement in here for the athletes. If there's new content, something specific, we may actually design some live sessions. It may happen that we just decide to, to run like a webinar in which we dive a little bit more into one of the topics with one of our Team Ontario coaches. And so these things will, will be announced in the announcements here. And if you're registered and you have that option checked, you should also get an email when you have these announcements. But any new piece of content that we add to the program as we go, there'll be announcements and this is where you'll actually get to, to know about this. All right. Because it should be mentioned that this is not something that we intend on keeping static. This is something that we intend on, you know, improving continuously as we go, as we get feedback, as we develop new best practices and find new cool stuff to, to share with our athletes. So, so yeah, so we got girls indoors here, boys indoors. We looked at the beach and then obviously there's this, the, this core program as well, that's built very, very similarly, that's available to all of, of the athletes. The last thing I will say before I pass it on to Lauren is just to mention that although this program is open to everybody, okay, it's really open to everybody. Everybody can benefit from this and learn from this. This program will be mandatory for athletes who want to be part of Team Ontario. And the reason why is very, very simple. It's because we're gonna use this program as part of the Team Ontario program. So when we run our camps and run our programs this summer, we will use those sessions. So coaches will refer, refer to those sessions, will send the athletes to watch, for example, the attacking, you know, lesson so that the athletes can go in, reflect and come back to the session with some questions and perhaps a better understanding of the principles of play around attacking. And then we can go into the session. And whether we're on court and we can actually practice that and practice those principles, or we're online and we can discuss and answer the questions of the athletes and take their understanding of what they saw in the modules even further. Well, just being able to use those sessions will be really, really important for the delivery of those TMO programs. So if you intend on being part of a Team Ontario program this summer, whether it's on the beach or indoor, you may as well sign up for the program now because it will be a requirement for, to be part of, of Team Ontario. So that's it for, for my piece. We have a little bit of kind of technicality logistics that Lauren's gonna talk about in terms of how to sign up. And then we'll be good to go. Do you wanna take control, Lauren, or do you want me to?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's okay if you take it there. LP, that's fine. All right. So hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well tonight. So I'm just gonna talk about how to register for these different modules that LP just walked you through here. So the Athlete Insights main page that you see here, this URL will be on our teamontariovolleyball.org website. Our ontariovolleyball.org, which is our main OVA website, it's gonna be posted on social media this week and newsletters to follow as well. So that will be your main source to find these registration links that are on your screen right now. So as you can see on the screen, there are three registration options available. So the athletes will have the choice to select which discipline will be their stream of choice. They'll be able to stick with one discipline or as you see on the far right, they can have access to both disciplines, indoor and beach volleyball lessons. Uh, so based on the needs of the athlete, they will select the registration link that is right for them. So they would click on the red icons there, register, which would take them directly to MRS where athletes will officially register and pay for the module of their choice. Uh, in order to register for this program, athletes must be OVA members. And that means that they would just have to have a base recreational membership, cause I know not everyone is signed up with a competitive at this time because of COVID. So if you haven't already registered in MRS as a player, non-competitive, I think is the official term, please do so. And then you'll have access to register and pay the fee of the 39 plus tax for the one module, 59 plus tax for both. So once the athlete has registered and paid on MRS shown there, it, within 48 hours, a login link will be sent to the email that is registered to the athlete's MRS account. So usually most times this is a parent's email, but that's okay. So with that login link, it will take you directly to the Insights website where you can make your athlete's account. And here you can actually input their own email, the athlete's email for them to have access to their account directly there. And we did this way because we know a lot of MRS accounts aren't directly linked to the athlete and that's completely fine. So this is your chance to actually register the account to your athlete. Uh, as LP mentioned, the program will officially launch on April 6th with the content. Uh, but please feel free to start to register for the program starting today and now it's all live. So if you register now before April 6th, don't worry, we'll be sending the, the login links starting on April 6th. So if you don't see anything in our inbox, in your inbox today or tomorrow, that's okay. We're gonna be sending all those links on April 6th when the program's launched and ready to go. Um, and then just something else to note there, you can see it in a star that it will be important for athletes to register for the module or modules for the Team Ontario program that they wish to be a part of this summer. So for example, if you plan on applying for the Team Ontario indoor program, then you would obviously make sure that you're registered for the indoor module. That can be for both indoor and beach or just the beach. And then same thing goes for a beach athlete. If they're planning on applying for the Team Ontario beach program, they would apply for the beach only module or the both beach and indoor modules. Yes. So I can throw it back to you, LP. I, I realize that you might not have said the April 6th.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't, I, I think I forgot to mention that. So yes, we are having our town hall and webinar tonight. And we're showing it to you now. Uh, but that's to give you some time to register so that you're already registered when it actually launches on the 6th. This is next Tuesday. And it also coincides with the day when we're going to have our town hall about our Team Ontario programs for the summer of 2021. Uh, and so we will actually on that day, show you how you can sign up and apply to be part of Team Ontario through this program. So if you already have registered, next Tuesday, when we walk you through this, you'll actually be able to do it with us and apply on the spot. So, uh, yeah, and I don't forget if you mentioned this, but when, when you sign up for, for the program, you will have access to it until end of August 2021. So until our new season. And at this point, you will have a chance to renew at a lower cost. And just because this program is meant to be something that, you know, athletes, you know, become a part of every year. We are, like I said, intending on creating some new content for it and updating it as we go. And the thing we also need to remember about this program is that because, because of this, right? And because the athletes will go through all of this content when they're, for example, they're 15U, they're going through it. They're going through it in the following year, they're gonna get something new. They're gonna, they're gonna get something new. And the other thing that I guess I should mention is that one of the cool things about all these activities is that they're really, they're really meant to have the athletes reflect, like we've mentioned a few times. And so there's no evaluation. Right? So that like they don't go, they're not being evaluated by any of us, by any of the Team Ontario coaches. This is really something that's athlete-led, that's for them. And so it's not like they're gonna enter some information there and it stays there and it's always gonna be there. They're always gonna have a chance to go back and redo the activity and redo the activity. And see another, see the same question again, but it may be a year later. And now they have a different perspective and they get a new answer and actually helps them take a further step into, into their development. So, so that's, that's the goal. Now, obviously the thing is we, we expect that things with the whole current situation COVID, we expect that things may not be normal in September of 2021, that there may still be some restrictions or variations to how we approach our new season. But instead of trying to guess what was gonna happen in the fall and then plan for that, we're just planning as if everything's gonna be normal. And when we know that it's not, And when we know that it's not and how it is, then we can adjust. So we're saying this here based on everything going normal. But we're very aware that it may not be normal and when that's the case, uh, we'll make the adjustments and we'll notify everybody who's part of the program to let you know how things will uh will move forward. Okay? Um, so we wanna be really transparent and open about that. So now that that's said, um, I guess the last thing I I just wanna say is, um, again, athletes will go through some of these lessons and they will end some lessons with questions. Not all the answers are included, okay? Because the goal, like I said, is for the athletes to come up with their own answers. So it is possible that at the end of a module or at the end of a lesson, um, they've answered some questions, they've done some self-evaluation. And they're still not quite sure what the right answer for them is with a certain activity, some question. If that happens, which we hope it does, because it's a really healthy part of learning and becoming a better athlete, is we're really encouraging athletes to communicate within each other. So if they have teammates who are doing it as well, they can reach out and see if, you know, they can get to a better answer or a more satisfying answer for them with a teammate, they can also reach out to their coach. And we hope that athletes do when they hit a roadblock within this program and and they're not too sure. Um, asking a coach, engaging in that conversation will be really, really beneficial for um for for their learning process and having and taking, developing the habit of you know, having discussions around the things that you're not sure about is a really, really good habit to develop. Especially if you wanna become the best version of yourself at something. Uh, you know, being comfortable, asking questions and discussing the things you're not sure about is a really good thing. And then the last thing I would say is, it is also possible that um if an athlete discusses with their coach um about something that they've learned through this program, perhaps their coach disagrees with what is in this program. And if that's the case, then amazing, that's awesome, because now that creates an opportunity for a really good conversation that will bring about, you know, um, the reasons why, you know, a skill is executed a certain way, why the game is played a certain way. And it's really gonna actually help both the coach and the athlete be more clear around why they do what they do. So at the end of the day, it's really what that is all about. So if those conversations can be sparked from the athlete's participation in this program, I think it's gonna be awesome for everybody um and for our entire community in the end. Um, so I think that's it. Or anything else um on my notes? That being said, there may be some questions, so let's take a look. Okay. Uh, where do I start?
Do you want me to ask you questions, LP?
Uh, it's okay, I got them. I just like went always, I hadn't read any of them, so I had to go all the way back. Uh, okay. Do you have a video demo that we can send the athletes that shows examples of the training? Question from Ted. Um, not yet, but it's it's been on my mind uh to do something like this. So um we'll work on something, we'll work on something so that perhaps like a little uh thirty-second video um of essentially what we did. You could essentially also use this this video and go back to the portion where we were on the inside the program, you could probably use that uh to uh to show your athletes, feel free to use this recording. Uh, but we'll put something together that will um, you know, be a little shorter, concise, that you can use. We'll probably actually ended up, end up putting it on on the main page of the website. How old do you need to be to apply for Team Ontario? Um, so those are questions. We're gonna answer in more details next week. Um, but essentially, this summer, there will be um FTG for beach and we'll have Team Ontario, black, Team Ontario red for indoor, and we'll also have a county games group. Uh, so, yes. Is a program available in both English and French? No, the program is only available in English. On April. Sorry, okay, how do we register for the town hall meeting on April sixth? Um, Lauren, are you able to get the link for that right now? Please, that'd be awesome. Uh, what are athletes supposed to submit to apply for TMO? Peyton, um, please come back next Tuesday, we'll have the full detail of that. It's um, yes, it's a little bit too much for the time that we have left for this call. Um, but we'll discuss all of that stuff for Team Ontario on the on Tuesday next week. Uh, what ages can be part of this insights program? So um it was designed for athletes ranging like that we usually work with um inside our Team Ontario program, so between fourteen and eighteen U. Alright, so if you're younger than that, you can, you can probably still do the program if you're really, really into it. Um, it may just, again, I think it comes down to is um, is your athlete, is your child? Uh, are you, if you're an athlete here on this call? Um, like at a, at a point in your development where you can go through these things and you can ask yourselves those questions, you can actually like sit down, you'll go through the different lessons. Um, I really think that it can be, there's a really wide range of ages and of skill level um that um that could really gain from this program. So it's designed for fourteen to eighteen, but again, if you're outside those ages, uh, you can definitely still apply, like, we won't be saying no. Uh, if you think that that works for you, you know yourself better than anybody else, and that's kind of the that's kind of the idea behind this program anyways. Um, so that would be a little foolish of us to uh to limit participation. I think that's it. I don't see any more questions unless you do there, Lauren.
Nope, I don't see any here.
Do you have questions, Angie? Anything that I forgot to mention? From our
Conversations.
Two thousand, two thousand hours of conversation around this? Yeah.
No, I think that you covered everything that I can think of.
Okay. Amazing. Well, we're really excited to have athletes get started on 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 this program and and to uh and to, yeah, to connect with them. Um, let us know if you have any other questions. Uh, as you saw there on the website, there's a little contact. Um, link at the bottom there, you can contact us. I did share the link to that Insights page in the chat, so if you missed it, just go back a little uh further up, the link is there to the Team Ontario Kajabi um website. Kajabi, by the way, is a platform that is hosting the Insights program. Um, so it's right there in the chat. So if there's anything else, you can reach out to us and we'll be happy to assist you with um with connecting with that, with the program. Um, the recording of this session will be posted online for anyone who would be interested. And yeah. That's it. Okay, everyone, have a great rest of day of evening. Uh, oh, wait, I see an question. So if there's no regional or red training this summer, should fourteen U athletes wait a year before signing up for this? Um, yes and no, um, it really depends. There will not be a regional program this year for the fourteen U athletes, that's correct. That being said, it doesn't mean that there is nothing for a fourteen U athlete to get out of this. Obviously, now the incentive to sign up for this program is not to be able to participate in TMO program. It's really just for the value that the athlete can get out of it and um uh out of the program and going through it and learning about themselves. Um, I I do think there is value for a fourteen U athlete, um, but I'm seeing.
I can get the beach. I can say, I can say on the beach side, if the athletes are intending on playing beach, I can't see how doing this would be really helpful. Um, we kind of, you know, self-practice and self um have some input into the type of practices that they they would like to run for themselves or with their coaches. So for sure, I think that would be great for for me.
Especially since there's presumably many people that will want to play beach this summer since.
I hope so.
Maybe uh the only form of volleyball that we have.
Yes, but I hope.
Been a long time, so. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everyone.